The October 23rd Select Board meeting will now come to order. A roll call, roll call attendance.
Hardikoff?
Would everyone join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda review and approval. Are there any comments or changes to the agenda?
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Seconded.
Roll call, everyone agrees.
Scosa.
Mantra.
Gibson.
Hardikoff?
Happy L O I. All right, we will open public comment. I don't think there is any public here, so before I read this long introduction to public comment, is there anyone online who will be joining the public comment?
Not seeing anything, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, we'll move on. Public hearing and invited guests, I do not see anyone here from the school board, so we will move on to our 2024 budget presentation. Our first presenter will be Chief Walker to discuss fire, EMS, and cemetery. I mean, we can reverse the order if you want to.
He knows his alphabet.
Brilliant.
And the fire and police chiefs continue the tradition and brought some delicious looking peanut butter cookies, so take one, pass it down.
Into this tradition.
Are those made with love?
Oh, good answer, Chief.
That was a nice saying.
Very quick.
Thanks, trying to get me out of here? Much appreciated. No.
And I told the police chief that the reason town administrator was here tonight was he didn't dare leave the two of us to fend for ourselves.
Yeah, listen.
This is a very friendly audience here, Chief.
I hired a babysitter for three kids and a recovering wife just to make sure everybody minded their Ps and Qs.
Isn't this your mother, you're paying your mother?
I pay her in love.
So going into the fire budget, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna hit the high points unless, unless there's something that you folks want me to stop at, if you have a question, feel free, but the first one, you'll see a 40% increase in the full-time hourly. And that's in the fact that our fourth full-timer that was approved last year was paid for, the salary was paid for out of the revolving fund and the town picked up the benefits. And in 2024, the town will transition that position over into the town paying for it. So that's why, that's the primary driving force behind that 40% increase. There is obviously, there's money built into pay raises for the four of them as well, but part-time hourly, you see an increase in that. Again, that was, that's mainly tied to the increase in salaries and getting up to the 24-hour coverage or trying to, we're still struggling to fill some of them spots. Only because it's tough to find people to fill. The per diem hourly took a 25% decrease and that was just looking at the numbers and that 39,000 is a more accurate figure as to what we've been paying out over the last couple of years. The big, the big hit, the elephant in the room is the overtime line. As you remember, a few months ago, we had the discussion about that. The, it's kind of a, it's kind of a catch-22 situation. The people that, that work for me like having some overtime and so we have to provide some or they're just not gonna stay here and then when they leave, whoever is left here is gonna get a whole bunch of overtime because people aren't beating the doors down to get into this business. And it doesn't matter whether it's here or wherever it is, it's just, it's tough out there right now to try and fill these positions. The other, excuse me, the other side of that is, is that because we staff man for man, if, if we have an open spot and I can't fill it with a per diem or part-time person, then I'm forced to go to the full-timers and, and give it to them in 24 hours of overtime. That's pretty close to a thousand dollars a day by the time we pay overtime. So that's really why that number is, I don't know, I mean, I, I, last year we, we increased it to 15 and obviously that wasn't even close. I don't know if 50, if 50,000 is, but I certainly know 15 isn't. And again, you know, the budget committee asked about whether that number could be reduced. Well, any number can be reduced, the problem is, is I still, if I, if we reduce that number and I have to spend overtime, then it's gonna come from somewhere else in the budget, just like it is right now. So, you know, I'm of the opinion that let's, let's pay for things out of the line they're supposed to be paid for and show the, show the town the true cost for doing business, but again, that's your decision. Employee benefits, that's up about 23%. I'll be the first to tell you that if you got any questions on that, you're gonna have to go to somebody that's a whole lot smarter than me. You'll see in the contract line, there's a 22% increase in the contract line. That is primarily because we just, there was an increase in the UNH dispatch contract in the amount of about 2,400 bucks a year that we signed a three-year contract with them, so that price won't change for three years. So that's primarily where the, where the big increase is, the rest of the stuff stayed pretty flat. There was no, no increase in vehicle maintenance, but if you look at the budget, the budget, my latest and greatest is that, and that's a month old. I anticipate that, we budgeted at 12.5, I anticipate that to be somewhere around, twice that, I anticipate that being somewhere around $24,000. Obviously, one of the big things was the big hit we took on the pickup truck transmission, but we also did have some other maintenance, we had to put a little money in the forestry truck so they would take, take a sticker, so, but I'm comfortable that we got past that and that, that we should be able to go back. That 12.5 would be adequate and if things work like I hope they will, we'll, we'll spend around a little less than that. Dues and fees goes, went up 37% and that's where, we belong to the Seacoast East Fire Mutual District and we're part of the start team and so they, they changed the dues and fees structure there. So between the added cost for the town's start dues and increase in the, increase in the annual dues for that district, you'll show about, it'll show about a $1,500 increase in that line. That's pretty much all of the big things, most everything else stayed pretty flat. The gear line, I know the protective gear will go up a little bit, but we happen to be sitting kind of in a spot right now where if we don't buy five sets of gear, if we buy four, that's what we have money for, we'll be okay.
So I just want to add a couple of things, if I may. Madam Chair?
Oh, yes, yes.
So you all have a copy of the budget committee minutes in front of you and obviously, a big topic of conversation was the overtime and the increase in overtime. And when I met with the budget committee the first session and talking about the budget increases and what were the decisions the select board and budget committee have to make, the way I framed it to them is balancing the level of service we're looking to have and maintain and the cost with doing so. And as you know, and you all have been here for a number of years, the goal of the fire chief and a goal that the select board has shared is getting to a point where we have that double coverage 24/7 in the fire department. We weren't there, you know, when I started in Barrington, we had two full-time employees and we were still relying on call members heavily to, to show up on evenings and on the off days during the week that there wasn't coverage. And that model, the, the decision of the players at the time was to transition overtime to a model where we had double coverage 24/7. And so what the, the big thing in my mind that that overtime funding does is help to guarantee that we don't have gaps in that coverage. And so, you know, the fire chief sat here and said, listen, if you have gaps, then it's gaps in coverage. Sometimes we can fill it and the fire chief fills a lot of those shifts when there's gaps right now if we don't have somebody that's available to fill them. But the biggest decision the select board has to make is what level of service you're interested in, in providing. And it isn't, it isn't, like I said, just a couple of years ago, the level of service was less than we're providing now, so the level of service has been increasing, that's a positive thing. And so what the chief is doing and, and what I have chosen to do in, in keeping it in the budget presented to you all is say, we'd like to maintain that level of service, we'd like to maintain the commitment of double coverage 24/7 and in order to do so, we need a lot of overtime to cover those shifts, the vacancies that exist throughout the year. And on that same vein, the chief and I put our heads together to think about how could we mitigate that? And one of the direct costs, the biggest cost is running ambulance service, right? Well, that generates revenue for the town. And right now, the ambulance revenue, which is about $150,000, $160,000 a year, that right now is split, 50% goes into the general revenue and 50% goes into the ambulance revolving fund. You'll remember last year, we just changed the purpose of that ambulance revolving fund to include fire provisions also. So the whole department, any expense from the whole department can be funded from that. And so the chief and I had an idea and we're, you know, the idea is for the select board to decide and it doesn't have to be tonight, but if we chose to present the voters with a warrant article that said, let's take 100% of that revenue and put it into the revolving fund and let's take the overtime ask and maybe the ambulance billing contracts ask and let's fund that additional money from the revolving fund instead of an operating budget ask. And what that would do is that would take money out of the operating budget, that would also take revenue out of the general fund. Now would be a reasonably okay time to do that because we've continued to see revenue growth in the rooms and meals tax. The highway block grant has stayed at a level, we're seeing an increase in revenue, a dramatic increase in revenue from interest on investments. So I don't think that this year, these coming years, we will experience that dip in revenue significantly. And so if there was a time to do it, now might be a good time to do it. And there's an argument that that aligns income and expenses better, where we're bringing that revenue in, we're spending it directly on the provisions of providing fire and, and emergency service. And so what that would look like is a separate warrant article asking voters to say, instead of 50% into the ambulance revolving fund, we want to put 100% into the ambulance revolving fund. And so the effect of that would essentially be pulling $50,000 out of the operating budget request and planning to fund that from the warrant article. The only footnote I'll give to that is we had talked about what if that warrant article fails? And it's not in the operating budget and we're not putting 100% in there. Fortunately, we're in a reasonably comfortable spot with the funding level of the ambulance revolving fund right now. We've been able to save up a lot of money towards the purchase of an ambulance, which is 320,000, so the latest number on that. You know from the last meeting that we're advertising a bid spec right now and we expect it to take
24 to 30 months.
So two, two and a half years, so it's going to be a while before we're spending that money, kind of point being. And so we have a buffer and we feel comfortable that if we go forward with a, a request to move 100%, even if it fails, we'll be able to fund the provisions, the level of service that we're proposing. So, and, and idea worth considering, doesn't have to be decided tonight, but that would be a way to pull 50,000 out of the operating budget and also reduce revenue, but align revenue with expenses. Did I miss anything, Rick?
No, and I think to add to that point, certainly I don't want to speak for the budget committee, but I would personally be of the belief that they would potentially support something like this because it, they look sometimes at, you know, they want us to spend what we ask for so that there's not a bunch of money left over. Something else. Taken, removing the ambulance, but the overtime and the ambulance paramedic intercept, reducing that down to a dollar is about what increase would be into that revolving fund. Be kind of a watch, but what it would show in the budget is 75 or 80,000 dollar decrease.
Chief Walker, can you talk about, it says in the ABC minutes that the contract is going up, the ambulance contract is going up with Frisbee, but you don't mention what we're Douglas, so if you just talk about that.
Yeah, so, so what that, what that is, is it's for intercept services, so it, Frisbee right now charges, Frisbee MSF, they come out and I'm on the ambulance with us to a Medicare transport, they charge us $200. Moving forward, I thought they'd have the numbers by now, but in conversations, it sounds like it's gonna be between 250 and 275 dollars every time they come out. The, the big increase for us there is, is that we were, we were getting an intercept out of them probably about 30 times a year that we weren't paying for and based on what the, what their proposal would be is that every time they climb on our ambulance, patient in with us, that they would charge 275, between 250 and 275, that'll be a pretty significant increase in that line. The city of Dover, right now, they haven't indicated to me that they're gonna go up. But right now, if we call city of Dover and ask for a paramedic to climb on our ambulance with us, it's $400 down in Barrington, whether the, whether that patient has insurance or they don't have insurance, it's $400.
That is, has to do with the level of training that our staff has.
The license, the license level in which you're providing medical care. So a paramedic is, is the top of the, and it's hard for, it's hard for departments our size to have a paramedic on staff because we don't do enough transports to, that require paramedic services. So they go through, it takes them a couple of years to get that license and it's a pretty intense program to get through, so obviously, once they become a paramedic, they want to go somewhere where they can use skill sets every day that they're on shift. So not to say that somebody wouldn't come in on their day off and work for us, but it would be really tough. I wouldn't want to sit here and look at you folks and say, if we hire a paramedic, we'll save money because we, we really won't. And Owen McGregor, so Frisbee and McGregor primarily, Frisbee probably does about 60% of our paramedic intercepts, McGregor probably does four over like 15 or so. McGregor right now gets 305 dollars. They were supposed to reach out to me by the end of September, but they were gonna have a meeting with their board of directors and they were leaning toward charging the same rate that Dover. And part of the problem running, if we take a patient that is, that only has Medicare, Medicare pays us about $600 for a paramedic call, so by the time you take 100 of them to and again, we're not in the business to make money, the, the, who is if a patient is down definitive care, then we're able to provide, we're people and that's why, that's why that line's there, because we're bringing the people.
Did we reduce the number of patient intercepts when they closed the urgent care? I'm thinking of the number of people that presented, had an EKG on site and had to get to a cardiac unit.
Yes.
We've reduced the numbers.
But we also lost them on 60 calls a year, 60 transports a year.
For the revolving ambulance fund, do you have to go back to the wording of the original warrant or create a complete new warrant as far as what the funds are designated?
Yeah, it's a good question, so what I would propose is an amendment that would change the purpose that was originally established, well, most recently established at 50% to the general fund, 50% to the revolving fund and just change that purpose to 100%. The, everything else would stay the same, this would be an opportunity that we could change it, but right now, we have the most, the broadest language allowed by statute for that revolving fund. So it wasn't until three years ago, two or three years ago, that the state statute allowed that revolving fund to also include in its purpose, fire. And it was set up, you know, for ambulance services, well, what everybody realized is, well, guess what? In any community that has an ambulance service, it's attached at the hip to the fire department. And how does Chief Walker differentiate between his advanced CMT firefighter that rides on an ambulance or a fire truck to a call and you're splitting their wages? So they said they changed the allowable purpose to include fire, but we had to go back to voters to change that purpose, which we did this past year, and so we have the broadest allow use, the broadest purpose. So we would just be changing how much money went where. Good question.
Are you presenting more about the cemetery or I have a question? The mowing, so, I mean, we have mowing needs all through the town. Is there, like, all, all of our mowing are conducted by our custodian?
It's a good question, so what we did this past year, so we heard from the school that they didn't have the personnel and equipment to continue the grounds maintenance. And so with the select board's support, we were able to find funds to purchase a mower and some equipment to start grounds maintenance and we also, with the support of the road agent, were able to pull one of the crew members off the crew this summer and provide grounds maintenance. That is a long-term plan, the road agent felt comfortable based on the workload that they had this summer. And truth be told, he got pulled off grounds maintenance quite a few times when they were working on more intensive culvert projects and things like that. There was also a ton of rain and that made things difficult also. And so that was never the long-term plan. What we have proposed this year to maintain the same level of ground maintenance service is a seasonal employee for essentially the 20 weeks of brass growing in the highway department as a seasonal grounds maintenance laborer. And that position, again, would maintain the same level of service that the highway department crew member has been doing, talking about the cap landfill, the transfer station, which we're required to mow on a schedule pursuant to the closure agreement on that. The recreation fields, this building, the public safety building field and, and grounds. And so that level of service is what we proposed to continue maintaining. The cemetery is different, and I'll let Rick speak to it, but that's a, that scope isn't included in the staffing that we have proposed and Rick can let you know where they're at and what their needs are for cemetery.
Yeah, so the, the school reached out and said, look, we're just, our contract stipulated that. They had to notify us or the trustees had to notify them by the end of September if they didn't, if either side didn't want to continue. They reached out to us in early September and said, we just don't have the resources to adequately mow the cemetery based on our current staffing. And we, we're not gonna renew the contract 2024. We, so the, the three trustees sat down and I had had some preliminary conversations with the town administrator and the facilities manager and we kind of all agreed that there's, if you have one person on a lawnmower and a weed whacker, they're probably gonna spend close to 40 hours doing that. So if they take the lawn mower and the weed whacker and get down to the cemetery and do the mowing and you're giving them 40 hours a week work, they're gonna spend all their time at the cemetery. And then if it rains sometime, the next week, and they can't do the cap and the rec fields and this place and the public safety building and all those stuff, everything gets further behind. So we realized that without the town making an investment of a second mower and having obviously two people running lawnmowers and stuff, that it wasn't worthwhile at this time for the town to consider taking on cemetery mowing. So I brought that back to the trustees, the three of us sat down and decided, hey, look, let's, let's put this out to bid for a contract for somebody to come in and mow it. And so we, we finished the wording up on the contract, that's gonna, that'll go out. We expect the quotes to get back November 15th or 16th, that's in my head for some reason. So we're having them sent here, they'll, they'll stay in a pile after, after it closes. They'll have a public opening the next day and then at some point after that, I'll schedule a meeting with the other two trustees. Thing and what we're trying to do is we're trying to entice them to look at in a three-year window with the hopes that get into the middle of the second year and that would give the cemetery trustees and the town the opportunity to look at whether it makes sense to do something different or stay down the path of having the cemetery mowed, their own mowed. One of the biggest complaints that we get is calling up and going, cemetery hasn't been mowed in a week. But it's rained for the last six days, well, it doesn't matter, I went in there to visit grandma. And legitimately, that's probably the biggest complaint yet, so we've been reluctant to, as a trustees, we've been reluctant to, we've had the money out there like this contract, they don't get paid till the end of the year. We've always kind of had this hanging over their head that, look, if you don't go mowing the thing, we're not gonna pay you. And then we'll go hire somebody else to mow it because we didn't. So the trustees to this point, we've not been real keen on the idea of not being able to have a little bit of, you know, if the town's mowing it for free, it's pretty hard for me to go and stand on town administrator's desk and jump up and down and go, hey, people complaining about the cemetery and he looks at me and says, what are you, what are you complaining for? I'm trusting they get it done, so. But we think a three-year, at least I think a three, two to three-year deal gives us, gives the town some time to look at it and again, that number is at 21,680, I think the mowing yeah, 1680 is the, is for, is in the contract line, is for the website. So that's the annual maintenance fee or whatever they call it for the website, so that would say that I'm, I'm looking at 20,000 bucks, 15 mowings. We're assuming there's gonna be We're assuming there's going to be around eleven or twelve, but we'll have a solid number. Obviously, if, if we intend is to have a solid number and either reduce that contract line or. Business is booming over there, they're dying to get in.
Boom, boom. It says, um, it says in the notes from the advisory budget committee, something about the potential that the cemetery plots are priced too low or lower than other communities. Are you looking at that and considering an increase?
We are. So, uh, Crystal put out a, um, Crystal Murky, the deputy task collector also gets to wear the hat of babysitting us with the cemetery. And so one of the things she did was send out to see what the area prices are. And we got a few back. And so, uh, one of the other things we were talking about is we get requests from people wanting to be buried here in town that either don't live here or never did live here. And, uh, to this point, our rules have been that, no, if you, if you didn't live here, you can't buy a plot here. In talking to the attorney, it's perfectly legal for the town to consider, um, uh, charging more for somebody that doesn't live in town. So to have two different rate structures. So that's one of the things the trustees are looking at is are we interested in, uh, selling plots to people that never did or don't live here for an increased fee? And increase the cost. What we believe to, to a little bit of a degree is that if we're lower, people are calling around and going, oh, Barrington's lower than whatever. So let's go to Barrington and get buried though.
What does the cemetery plot cost?
Off the top of my head, a full, a full burial plot is, I think, like five hundred and fifty dollars. You can have a total of three burials, either two cremations and a full burial or three cremations. And, uh, the reason that we limit the number of cremations to go in is because we don't, we don't want it to be financially beneficial to anybody to buy a full lot and just put cremations in it. Right now, I think a cremation lot is two hundred dollars.
Does the cemetery have its own like revolving fund, fund balance?
Yes, so, um, that was the other thing that the voters so graciously approved. Allowing once a year, the trustees can take any of the money that collected from selling lots in the cemetery. And it goes into a improvement and expansion account. So, um, there's, uh, we're, next year, we'll probably come to the selectmen and ask them to release money to allow us to, um, uh, lay out more beds. We're, we're starting to get to the spot where, um, there's not, um, you know, it's time to stop, you know, providing more places for people to go. So, uh, two years ago, we took a bunch of trees down and worked at the highway garage and, uh, put beds in what we call the old section, the section closest to the, uh, congregational church. And, um, then we've got the spot laid out that's behind, uh, the War Dog Memorial, that, that big flat field there. So we've got a couple of spots, uh, that will, will start working on getting that laid out so that, uh, Crystal can start selling plots.
Just to follow up, if, in chapter eight is the reports from the trustee of trust funds that show the balances in capital reserve and trust fund accounts. There's three accounts that have funds held in part by the cemetery trustees. So the very last one on the list is the one that was just approved last year, which directs, or twenty twenty-two. It's twenty twenty-two.
I think it was twenty twenty.
Directs any revenue into that account. Previously, we did it as a two-step process. It was kind of silly. And then farther up, zero three seven one is a cemetery capital reserve fund. That's the one we used previously, uh, has a balance of eighty-six thousand. And then farther up, uh, zero two four eight is cemetery land expansion. That has a balance of seventy-seven thousand. So between the three accounts, there's hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty, seventy-five, about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that the cemetery trustees have in accounts. We'll have to check, um, before you come to the select board with the request. I bet some of those might be cemetery trustees agents to expend, um, might not require. The, the capital reserve that we used for years might be select board. The trustees do have authority to spend money.
Do we have, and I already know the answer to this, so I'm asking it just so it's public. Do we have trustees with written investment plans so that the funds that are in each of the accounts overseen by the trustees are interest gaining accounts?
Yes.
Every one of them?
Yep, so, and a good example of that is the quarter one, say, the cemetery land expansion, which is zero two four eight. That balance at the end of quarter one was seventy-six thousand, four eighty-seven. And at the end of quarter three was seventy-seven thousand, six sixty-nine. So that's gained about twelve hundred dollars. Um, the town, the, both the funds held by the treasurer and the funds held by the trustee of trust funds, um, are, the town's approach has historically been very conservative investing. So there are certain statutory requirements. And then there is, you know, risk management that, that we apply. And so they, those balances, especially those funds held by the trustee of trust funds, could be earning more at a marginally higher risk. But they have basically been in savings accounts level of, of first earning, but still earning.
Yep. Liquidity was an impact that they talked about training.
And yeah, and it's all, good questions.
Way to knock them dead, chief. Thanks. Silver tongue, Bella.
Only in the town of Barrington. Only in the town of Barrington.
You already shared it.
Oh, look, a PowerPoint presentation.
So do we want to have the, um, ABC representative talk about each budget separately or together?
Probably, sure.
Steve, do you want to talk about, uh, address some comments about the cemetery?
With the fire, uh, we had, we had many of the same discussions that you all had. And essentially, Chief has been very good at, um, managing his finances over the years, has been our impression. And, and so, you know, we, we're pretty sure he's a good steward of that money. And we do support the, uh, the budget he put forward. I think there was one other flavor of the, um, the overtime and that was his view was that it's also important, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, to man, to maintain staffing levels because he'd been losing people to Rochester and other places that were essentially giving out that overtime. So it wasn't just about, you know, increasing or maintaining our service, but it was also about, um, maintaining our staffing levels. And obviously, the more you have transition there, the more costs, more just trouble that there becomes. And so that was, that also factored into our thinking. In terms of the, um, the warrant articles, uh, you know, obviously we support that we continue to work with both fire and police and everyone else to try to understand sort of how we're, how we are budgeting for trucks and ambulances and things over a ten, fifteen-year period. And so we're pretty confident with those numbers. We're still going to do some more analysis between now and the end of the year. But we do think that that warrant article is, is reasonable. And what's nice about it is it keeps us at level funding during that timeframe. So there's no huge spikes and decreases in the amount of funding. Just makes it easier to track and to manage.
Thank you.
Quick question, is this the first that the advisory budget committee is hearing about the expansion of the, um, dollars for the warrant article you're putting forward for ambulance and fire? Or have they been?
They formed an opinion on it.
Okay, but they've been made aware of it. Okay, excellent.
And Scott, I want to apologize. I've called you Steve twice tonight, so I'm sorry.
And you'll see in the minutes that, um, so Scott Shepard was elected as the vice chair of the budget committee and Steve Saunders was reappointed as the, or elected as the chair. So. All right, chief.
Moving along. Chief, we would like to have you come to the front of the room.
A formal invitation.
Oh, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
I literally get paid by the hour, so.
That's not true.
I get paid for my hours, just the rate goes down.
All right, I'll do it beside your five minutes starts now.
Five, I, I can probably do that. So I, I'm going to basically take it the same stance as Rick did. I'm just going to rip through, I'll hit the high notes. Danan's already seen this, so he knows what high notes I'm going to hit. I'm going to buzz through the, basically the contractual lines. You can stop if you want. I'm certainly willing to pause, but, um, salary is myself and the deputy chief. This may change based on who we hire, level of experience, things along those lines. I don't think that we're going to hire anybody with more experience than retired deputy chief Brooks. So I don't believe will be any higher than what was budgeted. Staffing, we're the same staffing as we were from a full-time perspective, uh, two patrol sergeants, one detective sergeant and seven full-time. And again, that's contractual at this point. I'm not going to let us forget the staffing survey. We currently have twelve full-time officers. DOJ, we should be at twenty-one, nine. USDA, Virginia Hampshire average would be twenty-six. Carcy School, sixteen. And Bartel Formula sixteen point three four. Not asking for anybody again this year. I just want to keep this in everybody's head, just in case we forget that we are significantly understaffed at the moment. The part-time, I'm going to stop for a bit because that is a significant increase over last year. The part-time, we have two current officers, Officer Young, who's been here four decades, uh, and Officer Turner, who we picked up a year plus ago. Officer Turner's been doing a great job filling in about one shift a week. He has been noticeably absent recently. He had surgery on his knee, it's recovered. He's going to be back around light duty for the time being. I'm going to use him in the office. The new rate includes hours for what we're going to call an accreditation specialist. I'm going to attempt to bring deputy chief Brooks back. Matter of fact, he's already worked a little bit so far this year. Uh, he's going to help me through the accreditation process. OT, I'm going to leave that level funded. We all know what OT is used for in town, so I'm not going to go through all that. You will note that the average for three years is slightly over what we've had budgeted. That included a significant, if you look at the last three years in the TA's PowerPoint, there's a seventy and change thousand dollar year. It's when we were extremely understaffed. We've been okay other than that. I, I anticipate being right in at the sixty-two-ish level this year. So I think that's a good number to hit. Witness fees, again, I'm going to level fund that. The prosecutor's been doing an outstanding job keeping us out of court. We have been in court more this year and I think I'm going to be over a little bit on my line. We're trying to catch up still. We have actually, Officer Young, this coming week has a trial that dates back to twenty twenty-one. So we're still trying to get caught back up and I hate to use COVID, but it is what it is. We've had DWIs that are old because we put them off. Officer Saroski missed a big chunk of trials when he was deployed. He's back and he's in court constantly now trying to get those dealt with. So I think we're going to be over this year. I think we'll be back to normal next year because I think that's all going to level out, hopefully. We've also had some pretty significant cases, as you've seen in the newspaper. Detective Sergeant Barber had a major felony. Those cases take time in court. Or at the superior court level, when we're talking days of testimony, that tends to eat away at that line item. Uh, holiday pay is contractual, so I'm not going to spend too much time there. Don't know what holiday pay is. The earned time buyout, I'm going to leave it eighteen-five. Again, this one always scares me a little bit. It's because it doesn't meet our maximum liability, but we haven't used that eighteen-five in the last couple of years. Uh, we've reached a point where staff would rather take their time than buy it. So I'm comfortable with the eighteen-five. Highway safety grant is actually a drop this year. Uh, we didn't do an equipment grant, so this year it's just patrol grants again. So our match contribution is less due to that. Employee benefits, not going to go through because that's contractual. Prosecution, slight increase. I think Attorney Reed was extremely fair with us this year, only going up to twenty-two, one fifty. She has been spending a lot more time in court, again, trying to play catch-up and everything else. So Jean is well worth that, just from my sanity, quite frankly. Police contracts are going up, um, the biggest part of this. Chief Walker mentioned UNH dispatch. We're in the same position with Stratford County dispatch. Uh, I have anticipated a ten percent increase. I don't have a solid number for y'all yet. Uh, I called over to the county commissioner's office. The nice lady who answered the phone when I was preparing this told me that she did not have an answer for me. I told her that I anticipated a ten percent increase. The meeting was that day. We spoke the following day. No decision had been made at that time. She did say that when she spoke to folks that that anticipated ten percent would probably cover me. But that was as far as she was willing to go. So right now, I'm anticipating a ten percent increase to Stratford County to sixteen oh thirty-one, but I don't have anything set in stone. IMC falls under this, that's our computer program. WB Mason's going up a little bit just because of costs. Pope Memorial stayed the same. Apparently the cost of taking care of dogs remains static. GPS monitoring is pretty close to the same within dollars. Uh, the SWAT team is an extra five hundred dollars this year. We talked about that last year. It went up. Uh, two thousand dollars is cheap insurance for a call-out. If we were to have to absorb the cost of everybody coming out from all the different jurisdictions, it would be a whole lot more than that for just one. Uh, we already had, luckily, I did not have to have anybody come out because it resolved itself within the timeframe from driving to point A to point B to my house. That alone would have been a significant cost. So we've been lucky thus far, that's cheap insurance. The alarm's two seventy, that's probably going to change right now, and I'll address it later on in the warrant. Uh, we have a company looking at the security and alarm systems for the PD, so we're all on the same company. We don't have that quote back yet, unless the TA knows something, I don't. Uh, range fees, the accreditation cost of six hundred and fifty dollars is new. We talked about accreditation in this room, so I'm not going to beat a dead horse again. Uh, TLO is a service which we use primarily through Detective Sergeant Barber. It's used for background checks for new employees. It's used to track people down during investigations. Or again, for fourteen hundred dollars, it's well worth it. That saved us a lot of time and money. Adobe has never shown up before. Apparently, we were utilizing Adobe, or we weren't supposed to be utilizing Adobe for a number of years. Uh, we've corrected that under block five. Thank you to the new IT folks and we're now above board. Wentworth is two hundred and twenty dollars, that's our new scheduling app. Not that I ever thought I'd be using the scheduling app, but here we are. Equipment, vehicle equipments and maintenance, I'm just going to leave alone at seventeen-five again. This is one that always bothers me from year to year. We expend a lot more than seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars on vehicle maintenance. However, the money we bring in through details, the seventeen dollars, our cruiser fee offsets that. If we ever have a year where details completely dry up, we're going to be in trouble. Haven't seen that historically. Don't worry about it, but I just want to get that out there in case next year is the year.
And there is an, an additional insurance policy for that in the outside detail revolving fund.
Right.
We maintain a healthy balance in that account. So if we did have something, went a year without details, there's some buffer.
And again, I don't see that happening, but I always like to get it out there. Uh, office equipment and maintenance, this line really doesn't exist anymore. It was the old Seacoast line. Copiers, same, three thousand dollars. That's pretty standard from year to year. Communications is up. The big issue in communications are MDTs from last year. Now added five lines for cruiser cell phones. The TA and I talked about this. We have been using these for a long, long time.
That's a personal cell phone.
My staff has been using these for a long, long time. The second that my staff break out their cellphone to the crime scene or an accident scene, they open their cellphone up to Discovery. They open it up to ninety-one A. Been doing it for a long, long time. I haven't liked it. This was the year that I decided to do it. We did not buy each officer a cellphone. We did not buy each cruiser a cellphone. We bought enough cell phones to be issued out at the beginning of shift to cover general staff use. I don't need the guy that's working the detail to have a cellphone on it, but I do need only to have one. So that's the, part of the increase in cost there, um, along with the MDTs from last year. So that's the part of the increase in cost there, along with the MDTs from last year. AT&amp;T consolidated, First Light, these are all known quantities. Police printing, level funded two-fifty. That's business guides, et cetera. Training, I asked for another thousand dollars this year. I still think eleven thousand dollars is light on our training side of things, but we'll increase that slowly. Police standards and training is mandating more hours every year. I think next year, we're gonna be up to twenty-four, which is still a ridiculously small number of hours to be mandated for in-service. I don't work on their mandate. My people get trained. Staff needs to be trained. I sat here years ago and told you I have a very new staff. I need to train them a lot. While they're aging, they're getting more experienced, which is good. We don't have the baby cops anymore. That's because of the training they're receiving, but we need to up on that. If I can send people to field training officer school, that's good. If I have people that are interested in accident reconstruction, that's good. Unfortunately, these week-long schools that I used to be able to send up to the academy for free aren't offered anymore. So IPTM now charges for accident reconstruction. We don't have anybody interested yet, but that's a fairly pricey school. Sam Saroski just went to two weeks of drug recognition expert school. That was free, thankfully, because NHTSA and the state offer that to us. But there are certainly other schools that are not free. Dues and fees is the same. Again, that's pretty static. Nothing's gone up there. That's DARE. That's the Association of Chiefs of Police. The USPCA for Donnie. Mileage and expenses, I'm not touching. Postage, I'm not touching. Supplies, we're gonna leave that alone, even though I have a feeling ammunition's gonna become a problem next year. I have planned ahead, I guess that's the correct way of saying that I've got a decent stockpile for my staff, and I plan on continuing to do that. Every time we shoot, that's harder and harder to replace. Five-five-six ammunition now is extremely difficult to get for the rifles. That price, luckily, I just ordered six cases before the price spiked. But every time we shoot now, that's gonna become more difficult to replace. So I'm leaving that alone, and hopefully I'm gonna be offering some before the end of the year to get even more. Uniforms is up a little bit as well. Again, everything is more expensive now. I just had one of the employees go buy two pairs of uniforms. That's the two hundred dollars. It's not cheap anymore. And we wear out pants. It's a fact of life. It's just like anything else. Vests, the BVP grant through the feds, they're replacing less and less every year, so we have to plan on that. Vests expire every five years. There's nothing we can do about that. If I make an employee work longer than five years with an expired vest, and the worst happens and he gets shot, the town is gonna pay out a whole lot more than we would in uniform. So we need to stay on top of that. Vehicles is the other significant increase. I don't know what that two thousand dollars is doing there.
Yeah, well, we do sit to two thousand, for sure.
I have no idea.
A little Tykes, red and yellow. Okay, yeah.
Fifty K is the correct. There's a typo in my vernacular.
Take vehicles for two thousand?
Yeah. So this coming year should, oh, it's up to, no, it's not up two thousand dollars. I forgot to delete that. It's up about ten thousand dollars. This should have been a two cruiser year. Thankfully, y'all approved the mid-year purchase of that administrative cruiser, so we don't have to do two cruisers this year. We still have to do one. I can't tell you the fifty thousand dollars is gonna do it right now because state bid is still up in the air. What I can tell you is that I just priced out Tahos because we were kind of looking at Tahos because they were cheaper last year, and Tahos are up over ten thousand dollars. If I can find my reference point, they were in the forties last year, and they're gonna be in the mid-fifties coming up. I have not seen the state bid on explorers yet. I'm hoping that the folks that we've done business with continue to have them. Fifty-two-six. Go Beamers. Make a good chief's car.
Let's go back to used ones from Missouri.
Yeah, fifty-two-six through McMillan for a Tahoe, which was a less expensive alternative last year. We're gonna be replacing Unit Eight, which is a Charger. It's got about a hundred and fifteen thousand miles on it.
Going electric?
Sure. Sure. Actually, the TA and I spoke about that real quick. Chevy is releasing an E-Blazer next year. I am gonna let somebody else work the bugs out of that before I take a leap. I've been burned enough by the Chargers that I'm not gonna be the guinea pig. This is just the, because we get asked every year. Two, one, 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 two, nothing in eighteen, one, two because of accidents. One, one, this should have been a two-year, but we're only doing. Equipment, we're gonna leave alone, fifteen thousand. That's body worn cameras as well, and we're gonna hit on that during the warrant phase. Clerical is normal. I'm asking for a very slight increase to thirty-two-fifty for K-9 Indy. Everything has gone up. See, I got that actual Indy picture where he's smiling and everything is good.
Indy's smiling.
So is Donnie.
Is he? Unzoom in, enhance.
He's not scowling.
Okay.
From the library, yes. This also includes funds for Watchdog. Since I had been a K-9 handler, we've all, well, we haven't always, but for the most of my career, we had the hot and pop, hot dog system in there. If the temperature reaches X, alarm sounds, sirens go off, windows go down, lights flare, et cetera, et cetera. What that doesn't do is if the handler is at a distance, it doesn't matter, right? Because it's audible. With technology, thankfully, we're all carrying cellphones now. Watchdog will send notification to Officer Morse's phone that is very expensive. Police K-9 is in a vehicle that is too hot. Every year down south, we lose police dogs. They get left in cruisers, cruisers overheat, bad things happen. That's not gonna happen here. For a little bit of extra money, I'm gonna make sure our investment is safe. So we're asking for a slight increase there. That is the budget, per se, and I'll pause before I go on. Questions, comments, concerns?
In reference to the new cellphones that are non-employee-owned, I heard you say that the officers on details will not be carrying them. My concern is the officer safety. We're seeing incidents across the country where people who are not, hopefully, I'm gonna use the term of their right mind, but they're hurting officers. And my concern is, if you're standing in uniform at a detail, you're just as vulnerable as you are at a stop, so.
I've taken mine off because these chairs make it a little difficult to get in and out of. We still wear our radios on detail. And again, if they're available, I could care less if one of the detail guys grab, folks grabs one.
Okay.
But if we, if for some reason we're heavy and we have four duty units on, which is almost unheard of, the detail takes less priority than my duty folks. But yeah, we still have radios. We still have other means of communication. The primary concern for those is calling dispatch, calling back witnesses, calling back victims, things we don't want our personal numbers used for, taking pictures. Because we have good, solid crime scene cameras in our cruisers, it's a whole lot faster, easier, and more millennial-compatible to whip out the cellphone, take that quick picture with a cellphone in a collision scene where we don't need crime scene-grade photographs. They're available. I, again, I don't, if the detail guys, folks wanna grab one, fantastic. But primarily, I wanna make sure my duty units are taken care of. I have not grabbed one. That's gonna be teaching an old dog a new trick, because I need to start making sure that I do that.
Going back to the first slide about the survey and the different audits that the different organizations use to assess how many staff we should have, where do you see the biggest efficiencies or that we would need more? What would you do with more?
What would I do? We'd have a lot more proactive patrol. We'd have, again, not that calls are not being answered in a timely manner, but we'd have more folks available to deal with that. I'd assign one more to detectives, in all honesty. The reports don't specifically cover detectives. They cover staffing. But if you look at the formulas, the one formula that we actually work out calls for service, and full disclosure, I did not run numbers again. Those are prior numbers. Our numbers have gone up. They fluctuated. But if you look at the manner that the formulas worked on, they start talking about index crimes. And when we get into the index crimes, they assign a time value to those. Those index crimes are typically what a detective would handle. So while it doesn't specifically spell out detective, not detective, when you start getting into the hours involved in those index crimes, that's a detective function. I'd add one more in the detectives' area. Detective Sergeant Barber is doing an excellent job on her own. We've seen that in the paper. We've seen the convictions. She's overworked, and she's overloaded. A junior detective, junior detective, a patrol equivalent detective would take some of that offer. At any given time, I'm, I am working five or six one-fifty-nine-eleven cases, which involve our gun stores and fraudulent information to obtain a firearm. These are cases I should be pushing off on a detective. I don't wanna say that they're not important enough for me to give to Detective Sergeant Barber, but they're not important enough for me to give to Detective Sergeant Barber. Because if it's me taking time out of my day to work a one-fifty-nine-eleven case, which just involves following up with Renaissance or two A or whoever, versus assigning it to Detective Sergeant Barber and potentially taking her off an AFSA or juvenile-related or a crime against person, that's a no-brainer for me. But that's not something that the chief of police should be doing. Factually, I run the cases to the point where they're ready for a complaint and warrant, and I shove them off to somebody else. Thankfully, right now, I have a sergeant on light duty. So my light-duty sergeant has been getting those cases, and she's been running with them. If not, I give them to patrol. They need the experience doing complaints and warrants anyway, but I'm taking those cases to that end, where that would be better served than the detective's office. So the first thing I would be doing would probably be adding a detective. Ah, no, first one would go on patrol. Number two would go on detectives. For what it's worth. And it may be time after two years for me to rerun that formula. That Bartel's formula is a pain. It took up a significant amount of time when I was deputy chief, but it may be time to rerun those numbers.
I say, I think we're talking at least three people to bring up to the lowest.
To the lowest. Yes, sir.
And ten, ten or fifteen to bring it up to.
Yeah, and I don't anticipate seeing ten or fifteen anytime before I pass from this world, let alone retire. But I'd like to see us get at least closer to that sixteen mark before my time of bearing is through.
Thank you.
Good way to extend his stay here. Oh, maybe in two years. We'll add one every three years.
Nope, not yet. The warrant article request, I told you we'd be talking a little more about tasers and whatnot. Last year, we didn't do this as part of the budget presentation. I figured I'd get it out of the way now. We asked for the police equipment in capital reserve to be up by fifty thousand. My original request was less than that, and then I took a look at what was coming up. The big project, we did the computers two years ago. We got those online in February of this year is when it was finalized. Grant money through the DOJ, looking forward, that's gonna cost about a hundred and fifty thousand to replace down the road. Again, if there's money out there through grants, we will apply. We will work for it, but we can't plan on that or anticipate that. So that's a big piece coming up. Tasers are due in twenty-five. The town of Lee just purchased the Taser X-10s. They're about five grand a unit. And we have fourteen officers that are gonna need to be outfitted. There is a contract that in twenty-twenty-five, which conveniently is the same time our body-worn camera contract is up, that we can combine tasers and body-worn cameras. That will be a decision for the board to make in twenty-twenty-five. But point of fact, I'm now wearing a new one. I don't know why they gave me the new one. They did. We used to wear the body-worn threes. Because we are contracted with Axon, when the body fours come out, they replace the body threes with body fours. So we now have the latest technology to be wearing. Thankfully, we were too short. They let us keep our body threes, so now I have a whole bunch of extra cameras in case I fall and break one, which is possible. And then the security system is the other big player that we're gonna have to look at. We paused that due to the renovation. We can't pause it anymore. The brains of our security system are nineteen-ninety-nine technology. That, yeah, that hasn't been replaced since we built the building. We've added cameras to it. We've scabbed stuff in, but the brains, the guy laughed at us when he showed up. So he's still working on a quote. We'll know more when we know more, and unfortunately, I don't have any more than that right now.
And you'll have a system that serves the new renovations?
The new renovation, in theory, yeah. So that is that one, ma'am. I guess we can pull up number two.
Do you wanna have the vice chair of the budget committee address the budget? And then the next portion is strictly the renovation addition in the request.
God Shepard?
Yeah.
So again, police department, from a financial perspective, this will run. And we've been very pleased with all the information we've been given. There was less discussion here. Obviously, there's a lower increase in the budget. We did talk a bit about the money for the specialist, accreditation specialist. It seemed like that, from our perspective, looked worthwhile to do. It both limits the liability going forward for the town as well as would probably raise the bar of our police department, because now people will be following defined roles and responsibilities, procedures.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Chief.
Chief.
Chiefs, plural.
Chiefs.
They share the building. They share the spotlight.
Owen Luke.
Neither one of them can retire until there's a renovation addition, so.
Recreate the wheel with this. Virtually the same presentation as last year with numbers changed.
Excellent.
Yeah. Nothing's changed since last year. Realistically, our building is still the same building that it was. It changed twenty-twenty-four in red, though.
We need a bigger building because there's more cops and they need more places to sleep, so.
Base bar? He's used red on gray. It's mad because he can't. Didn't like.
So the objective remains the same, is to just provide a plan for completion for and prepare a warrant to be presented in twenty-twenty-four, not a warrant for the entire building, just a warrant for engineering. If the town is not gonna support that, they're certainly not gonna support a renovation, was our way of thinking. Current staffing levels, we have changed a little bit from last year. Police department has added one full-time and two part-time since the prior renovation. Fire department has clearly added a lot of staff since nineteen-ninety-nine, as they should. History, Rick can feel free to chime in if I missed anything. Public safety building was constructed in nineteen-ninety-nine. Solid date, renovation in eighteen, which cut off access between the PMFD. At that point, we were looking at three to five years. Well, now at five years, so we have outlived that renovation. Twenty-one, our intern created a need-based report, which he presented to the TA as part of his time with us. And in twenty-twenty-two, we did a feasibility study. Rick and I both agree that we wanna stand under the same roof. That was questioned during my ABC presentation. I don't know if it was during the fire chiefs or not. I am not a big proponent of splitting us up. I don't wanna move away from the fire department. I think it's good for operability. I also think it's hard groups to work together. There were no current town-owned properties that met our needs. Buy land, the daily operations, the school bond is tired. At that point, there were no other infrastructure projects proposed. That has changed, which is why we're not looking at doing everything sale this year, because fire department side, dispatch, personnel offices, kitchen, training apparatus bay for two M. Tank, rescue, forestry, mechanical, shared space upstairs, bunk, size room, common room, and there's also an office. PD, entry and admin assistant, personnel offices, evidence, purge mail, bathrooms and locker rooms, interview interrogation room, booking room, Sallyport. Staffing levels, the only addition from last year for us is the anticipated addition of our time officer, the education, and on the fire side, unless I have taken the essential part-time A, unless I miss them. That is the current plan as it sits, up and over a little. And the concepts are the same as last year's. Facial needs have not changed. It's the same.
I was just with you turning your head.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're okay.
Financial, same again. And I'm not big on recreating the wheel. Information presents itself. I'll certainly add it. Basically, TA, and we spoke with the TA at different times, if the public is gonna support engineering, they're gonna not gonna take the huge bite at the apple. They're not even. They're not even willing to support that. If they don't want to do it, stand and.
So the select board already talked at the October 2nd meeting. We talked about having a $150,000 warrant article, you know, plus or minus, to fund the engineering and impact fee assessment in order to evaluate the possibility of addition of this building. The, in addition to just talking about that warrant article, the item that we talked about timing wise is what we'd like to do is like to advertise a request for proposal and get a architect firm hearing support on, selected, preliminarily selected. So if and when this warrant article passed in March, we can sign the next day and get them going on. Because they're going to have a pretty short ramp to get the project design priced out. Process, we don't want to lose time on that. And so, you know, we never want to advertise an RFP that we're prepared to and so we would make it clear in our advertisement that the engine so that folks but as long as you all think that's a good idea, we'd like to start preparing that now, get it advertised and on a timeframe, have a selection made prior to the mark vote. Ground running after that. And through that process, we also should be able to price, 150,000 has been a placeholder. That is largely based on the anticipated architectural fee for a renovation of this scale, both square footage. And we had a feasibility study done with our engineering record, evaluate the structural availability. So we have some groundwork done. And so, yeah, that's the real request here, the decision we'd like.
Like to make a motion to authorize the preparation of a request for proposals for design services at the Public Safety Building.
Roll call. Question.
Is there a set price for the renovation that we're providing them so that they're all signing, providing something that we're going to vote on based on a certain range that they're because we're going to pick the nicest, whatever they can do best.
Yeah, it's a good question. And I don't know, I don't know that I have an answer for that yet. I think we need to decide that, we collective. So how I would imagine this looking is we would develop a request for proposal, bring it back to the select board to authorize advertising that one. So there would be further opportunity for input, but we can certainly talk about that now. I guess what I would say is we would give with the advertisement, we would give that feasibility study that we had. That does a couple of things. One, it was impart space needs assessment and identified approximately 4,000 square feet of additional space was adequate for the future growth of the town and the two departments that occupy the building. So we would tell them we are looking at an approximately 4,000 square foot building and a renovation addition that changes the footprint in this way and changes the interior this way. And so that, I feel like, sets boundaries enough to be able to compare apples to apples. I, I don't think, I don't anticipate we would make a decision on a design firm based on what they anticipate the renovation addition price being. I think we would make that selection separately the next year. But what do you all think?
So that drawing was submitted by the people that did the study, right?
Right.
So I don't know how much their architects are not.
They're not.
So whether or not other architectural firms might come up with better ideas, other ideas, if we're going to constrain them to what the feasibility people said, we might not be getting the best design.
Yeah, really interesting point. So I think it would be appropriate to include language that gives some flexibility in the design, as long as they can make it work. I think the biggest part of the feasibility study for us was evaluating if the site supported an addition and if the building structurally supported an interior renovation that included a level above the base. And they concluded that it did, but I think to your point, maybe it doesn't look exactly like that concept and making sure that we use language that encourages them to use their expertise.
Because part of the, part of the RFP, they would be able to meet with the occupants and get a feel for where their needs are and what they would like to see.
You're talking about having a need for probably four officers. At some point in the future, will this renovation accommodate?
It shouldn't accommodate a lot more than.
Roll call.
I would point out, it's in your note, it's in the notes from the ABC. The question specifically was asked Chief Joy. If library, anticipated library buying this building over here.
Made me uncomfortable, that makes me uncomfortable, too.
Would, would the police department be willing to move into that building if the town purchased it, but the library didn't? His answer was?
No, I, it's not. A, I want to stay with fire department. I'll explain myself here, too, even though, again, I don't even like the question because it almost hits us against. I don't want to be on 125. There was some thought way, way back when, when this building was being planned, about leaving room for the police department. Leaving this building, and I'm going to use this building so that there's no question that I'm honing in on anybody else's territory and hauling out onto 125 to make code response is a terrible idea. Y'all have left this building during business hours, during the day, with traffic. It's a terrible idea and we're going to get, we're, we're going to either A, wind up causing a collision or B, we're going to wind up waiting an exorbitant amount of time to do what we need to do. There are some, you know, the adrenaline rushes for those hot calls and I'm not going to call it anything other than what it is. When you get that adrenaline rush, when you're leaving for a call, when I walk out onto Route 9, it's bad enough. And if I'm coming down to Route 125, I have in excess of just about a mile to get that back under control before I hit the lights at 9 and 125 and I'm rationally making good decisions again about my operation. From here, and we're going to use this building, 125 is a matter of yards. Might not be making those same good decisions when you hit that traffic and that's a recipe for disaster. And at 50 miles an hour, if somebody misjudges a car and hauls out onto 125, that's potentially a fatal collision. So, no, I, I don't want to move into that building. I want to stay where I am and like I said at the ABC, if I could uproot the Public Safety Building and move it to Smoke Street, that would make me even happier, but I can't do that. We've got, we're on Route 9 now, that decision was made, I'm happy there, we're happy there. I want to stay.
And it's important to understand, too, that one of the more prime properties that if you look at 13 acres behind K. And the, the entire committee would cross that piece of property off early in the process. Back to that region, I want to be coming up five, 25 years ago. And everybody knows that traffic is way worse than it was. So, you know, I echo Chief Joy's sentiments. For somebody that's been there maybe way too long, but been there when fire department was else. And the relationship that I have seen in our building with three different police and God knows how many police years. And I'm, I enjoy the relationship that goes on firefighters in the and a lot of that is because of the that in the building, they come over our side. And we get to interact with one another. There's not bad stuff going on. And sometimes we're, we're able to grab lunch together, shoot debris. You know, one of the police officers will stop in and have coffee or whatever. Doors are open, and guys go out. So it's, it's that ability to be together when bad stuff isn't going on. Friends, friendly with one another. So when, when backs against the wall and hitting the fan, they're, these guys know each other. I would hate to see that.
And that relationship shouldn't be overlooked. There are a lot of communities that that does not exist. The firefighter, police butting heads is, is not just a myth, that's a reality. And it's a reality among peers in New Hampshire that I talk to. The relationship that y'all have here between your emergency services is not something that should be dismissed. Not, I know you know that, but it, it needs to be said. And one of our members has a smoke eater in her family, so she understands.
Roll call.
Oh, Hardicoff eye.
Gibson eye.
Mantra eye.
Sakoshia.
Capella eye. I just wanted to make a comment on when we did the transportation master plan update. I think the figures were 18,000 cars a day on 125 in Barrington and 12 on Route 9.
I do not remember.
It's a lot of cars.
Select person Sakoshia and myself use Kate Road probably the most often of select board members. I've had to pull over on Kate Road multiple times when there were emergency vehicles leaving the campus and so.
And know that I hate, hate going Kate to Malago, but there are certain times of day where it makes more sense because you're going to get jammed up at the intersection.
Yep.
I don't like hauling down there code, light sirens regardless. It's still a residential area, but better that than getting held up at the lights.
Thanks, fellas.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
So moving ahead, the consent agenda.
I would like to make a motion to approve the October 23, 2023 consent agenda A through B as presented.
True.
Roll call.
Hardicoff eye.
Gibson eye.
Mantra eye.
Sakoshia.
Capella eye. Moving on to appointments, zoning board of adjustment, we will vote on Jackie Flanagan. She's interested in becoming a member of the zoning board of adjustment for a full appointment of the term expiring in 2020.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Jackie Flanagan as a full-time member of the zoning board of adjustment with a term expiring in 2024.
And I would enthusiastically second that and I'll be glad to have a full zoning board.
Great, roll call.
Hardicoff eye.
Gibson eye.
Mantra eye.
Sakoshia.
Capella eye. Moving on to staff reports, Administrator McGarver.
Thank you. So October work anniversary, Sam Saroski has still been with us for four years. Training opportunities, they have the link to register for the NHMA annual conference. If you need help registering, we're happy to help you and the town covers the cost. Finally, the additional 2024 budget binder documents. So we have a, a batch of new documents. This happens for information that just becomes available typically this time of year. So you have a full narrative of the police equipment capital reserve. This is a really, really well-prepared document that explains all of the costs of that capital reserve, the schedule, and additional narrative of where things are going. So if you have folks that are asking you questions about that capital reserve, this is a great resource. The New Hampshire occupational wages, employment and wages for Dover Durham area, I share that as a resource to understand something that's available to track our wages against. We're doing well, but it's good to, to keep, be mindful of that information. This next document is probably the most important of the batch, the 2024 cost of living adjustment data. So on October 12th, the Social Security Administration announced a 3.2% cost of living adjustment. That was factored into the CPI data, the consumer price index data for our region. And that data is shared in that document. The budget committee will be reviewing that document on October 31st and having some discussion, continuing some discussion about how the CPI data excludes food and energy as cost items under the premise that they're too variable. Well, the budget committee has made the point that, yes, they're variable, but those are some of the highest costs right now. That's the biggest inflation that we're seeing. So the CPI data might be underreporting the true cost of living and we should be mindful of that. So the budget committee is going to look at that data and then the select board on, on November 6th will hopefully be able to make a determination with some input from the budget. The next batch of documents is just our insurance providers providing their updated rates. So that came available on October 15th. The biggest news is our health insurance rates are the guaranteed maximum rate increase is 16%. And that's a huge hit. I had budgeted 10% increase. Unfortunately, there are a lot of factors that feed into this. It's not unique to our health insurance provider, it's health insurance in general. Specific to our health insurance provider, there's a rebound from COVID. There were a lot of procedures that were put off during COVID. We actually received a pretty healthy return of surplus. That's how our organization is, is governed. When they have a surplus, they return it to the members. So we saw some money back for a few years when people were putting off procedures. Well, the procedures have picked up and they've continued, they haven't rained off yet. The other big one is prescription medication. So the prescription medication costs are increasing and utilization is increasing. So much so that our health insurance provider fully funds a genetic testing for medication compatibility to ensure that members are utilizing medications in the most effective way. So the genetic testing basically does two things. One, it measures how fast you metabolize certain medication based on your genes and tells you whether or not, you know, it's likely to be effective for you. But the other big thing that it does is gives you information on how different drugs interact with each other with your genetic makeup. So it's a tool, it's not the tool, but it's a tool doctors can use to, to try to basically point being, our health insurance provider isn't ignoring the fact that prescription medication costs are going up, trying to do what they can on multiple those documents.
All right, moving ahead, municipal officer administrator call.
Just a few things for signature that aren't on the TA report. Three winter maintenance contracts for Chair Capella to sign tonight. Those are in front of you. And then for DocuSign on Thursday, we have one county tax apportionment agreement as well as the oath of office for Jackie Flanagan. Is that?
Thank you. Moving ahead, old business, what I would bring up is, is we talked about having our two representatives, Stratford County Regional Planning, come before us. We're still trying to schedule that, hopefully that will happen in November, December. So if there are any specific questions, anyone on the board we talked about sort of generally wanting to know what they're doing, what are the issues that are coming before for them? And then I had a specific question about a reference in the paper about Rochester, talked about the River Walk. They talked about a hiking or biking trail from Barrington to Rochester. And I've asked our reps to track that down because that was news. Anything else under old business? Moving ahead, new business. Okay, select board reports. Three of us. Is anyone else?
I didn't, I didn't look. I didn't look at, at details. I, I, we can shuffle, shuffle as we get there. You don't have to sign up way in advance. I mean, you so depending on who's going to go, we can all
I'm going to 15.
I'll probably go both there is all I may have to leave early in the tickets to go see Wait Wait Don't Tell Me. That night, that night, so. Good choice. Yeah. Can shuffle depending on what, who's, who's there and I think
That's great, I had trouble deciding.
Yeah, and so they, you register so they can get an idea of which room to put the sessions in, right? But you're not locked to that, yeah? So you can, you make a selection when you register and then you can bounce around.
Select board member reports and concerns. So I recognize that we're going through these pretty often. We've had a meeting. So I don't know if anyone has anything to
We had 350 children walking in the rain collecting Halloween candy. 300, I made 350 bags up and got rid of all of them. I was shocked. It was, it was a great day. The rec department did an amazing rec department did an amazing job. We had one continued ZBA case that will be heard next month and implemented a site visit for it. And then we're just waiting on the housing coalition to give us our numbers and we can put together a report.
Yeah, which I think is at 495 or something. We didn't quite make 500.
Energy Committee met last Thursday. Swarin Cindy Hoysington was the latest addition to the committee. Biggest thing there is to be aware that there are two public hearings that are scheduled to present the Community Power Coalition for New Hampshire. That'll be on Thursday, November 2 and Monday, November 27.
Both in this room.
Yep. And the 27th will be during a select board meeting. That's it from there. And this coming Thursday is Conservation Commission.
ABC, and we heard their report. Unfortunately, it lasted a long time, so I missed the school board meeting because it was the last of the school board meeting. Went over and talked to them today. They still don't have any applicants for the Bacon School Board position. So all those who are out there who want to do that, that's open. They did present the budget. I don't have that number yet. I'll get that.
Ooh.
I think that.
Great candidate.
About that too.
She doesn't know. Do you have anything to?
Yeah, nothing really new at the Technology Committee. We heard about the rec. We got the final draft back from the legal department for the Classics Private Roads Committee. We just have a couple minor adjustments to touch up on.
Planting Board, we met last week, and I think the three areas that the public has been most interested in is the Dubb group applied for a one-year extension and was given that. The Winkley Pond Road asked for a one-month extension, so we'll take that up. Again, the Young Road report, we voted favorably on a waiver they requested, and it was really around the metric to use when looking at the traffic reports. So whether you would use two feet or 3.5 feet as your sight of distance. And 3.5 feet is generally where you're at when you're in a car. So that is the metrically approved, which is the national metric. We requested three reports, an environmental study, traffic study, and drainage reports. Some of those have been available, but not in time for the board to have time to review them before the meeting. And we are waiting for CMA to review the two of those reports, the traffic study and the drainage report. And so they won't be making any big decisions till we have the CMA report. And that is it. We are now entering our second public comment. Is there anyone here in the room that wants to make a public comment? Looks like not. Anyone online? Don't see any movement online. Okay, we'll end public comment. I'm not aware that we have any need for a non-public session.
I have one briefing for personnel.
Personnel, okay. Do I have a move to?
I would like to make a motion to exit to non-public.
For purposes of personnel.
For purposes of personnel.
Okay.
Hard copy.
Gibbs and I.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.